I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to the board meeting. And I will be chairing, so bear with me. It's my first time. I'd like to thank Sergeant Clark for joining us when he gets here. And I would like to remind everybody to turn off or silence their cell phones. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. All are present with the exception of Mr. Braswell. If we could stand, Dr. Meyer can lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Can I have a motion?
Some move.
And a second? Motion by Ms. Blaylock, seconded by Mrs. Shelley. Call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. We do not have a public hearing this evening, nor instructional highlights, so we'll move on with recognitions and awards with 4.01, the International DECA Competition Winners. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair. Let me do this again.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. At this time, I would like the following individuals to come forward. Katie Statler, Kristen Smith, and Hope Manonin. And as they do all of that, I would also like to invite the DECA teacher advisors, Ms. Collison, Mr. Gardner, and Ms. Fairings. This year, Riverbend DECA sent 22 competitors to DECA's International Career and Development Conference in Nashville. These students made division history as the first students from Riverbend to place in the top 10 in the world at the ICDC. Out of more than 18,500 competitors, Spotsylvania County Public Schools had five students onstage representing Riverbend and Virginia. Katie Statler and Nikki Reeves, who was not able to join us this evening, placed second in the world for School-Based Enterprises Retail, which is a written manual event that showcases our school store and the different aspects of marketing that go into running the cave. Madison Kalikia, also not able to be here this evening, was a top 20 overall finalist. Kristen Smith placed top 20 in her role play. Hope Manonin was the ICDC top 10 finalist in her event for Sports and Entertainment Marketing. She placed eighth in the world in her event. This was Hope's fourth time placing at the ICDC. She was the first student in school history to place four times. This event consists of one written test on a variety of topics in marketing and two role plays where students are given a situation and problem and have 10 minutes to prepare a solution to the given problem in a business professional setting. Hope is also the most decorated DECA student from Riverbend with more than 20 medals, various plaques, scholarships, and awards. Congratulations to all of you. We're extremely proud of your accomplishments and wish you much success. And we'll miss you too, okay? Seriously. And additionally, if we have any family that are in the audience, if you could please stand and be recognized for your support of the accomplishments just as well.
Mr. Wolf, will you continue with the second recognition? And I want to emphasize the word "national" Skills USA Competition winners. National winners. I think that is the first time that I can ever remember for Spotsylvania County Schools to have national winners. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. At this time, I would like to invite Justin Piercy to come forward. Josh Haley would also have been here. He was unable to make this evening. However, we are pleased to share that at the June Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference held in Kentucky, two of our recent graduates, Justin Piercy and Josh Haley, who was not able to join us, placed in this competition. More than 6,000 Career and Technical Education Students, all-state contest winners, competed hands-on in 100 different trade, technical, and leadership fields. Justin Piercy from Riverbend High School placed first in the category of technical computer applications. Josh Haley placed first in the category of heating, venting, air conditioning, and refrigeration. Our Career and Technical Center had the only two gold medals in Virginia. This is the first time we have had two gold medals in the same year. Congratulations to both of you on this outstanding accomplishment, and we are extremely proud of you. And also, if Justin has any of his parents that are here this evening, we'd certainly like to recognize you.
Dr. Martin?
Good evening. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Madam Vice Chairman, we do not have any speakers signed up at this time, so I turn it over back to you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to 5.02, board member comments, and we'll start with Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. I just want to say I hope everyone is enjoying your summer, and I have no further comments this evening.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Likewise, no further comments, and looking forward to the beginning of this next school year.
Mrs. Blaylock?
I have no comments, but I would like to take a moment to welcome the scouts that came in on the front row. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Twig?
Just a couple of short things. I'd like to highlight one of our local church ministries who has blessed our school system throughout this school year and each of the past three years. Pastor Dale Hewitt from Grace Church coordinated his ministry and events known as Samaritan's Summer Outreach. What's that mean to us? Well, their effort is to provide support for needy families, physical labor, things you can do on a Saturday with a team and staff of people. And they can both partner and help people save money. They primarily worked for us at Livingston Elementary over the past three years, but this past year, the summer, they've been helping both Livingston and Salem Elementary. So, we appreciate having them and an abundant of others, but that was a noteworthy event at a school in my district, and we'll give accolades to anybody else who steps forward. Also, I reintroduce an idea I presented twice to each of you, my fellow board members, toward providing internet service to our students, parents, and citizens for a few after-school hours twice a week. Especially for those of us who live out in the country and do not have either cable flying by our street nor nearby cafe. And we had a large meeting two weeks ago with Dr. Baker and his staff, the county administration integrated with us and their staff, and Mr. Blaine escorted me, and we represented the school board. And we had a progressive meeting with our county librarians and school staff, having a separate meeting to discuss some pertinent issues toward that end. And that will follow with, we will follow up with another meeting on or about August 23rd and hopefully have some leading information for each of us as a board to consider supporting in an endeavor to support students primarily, but parents and, of course, citizens as well. So, thank you for hearing me say that, and look forward to good things led by Dr. Baker from that toward, as we move forward into the fall. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine.
One of the nice and the benefits of being on the school board is to see young people receive awards, as we saw just a few minutes ago. But I'd like to emphasize that they're there because of people like you in the audience tonight, because of your expertise in education and dedication to our boys and girls. And my compliments and thanks to our entire staff.
I just want to take a moment to also congratulate our DECA Competition Winners and our Skills USA Winners, because I went to Nationals for DECA when I was their age, and it's absolutely worthwhile event, but you definitely have to work hard to get there, and you miss a lot of school while you're there, so you have to work hard to make up and not get behind. So, congratulations to them again. And we will move on to the superintendent report. Dr. Baker?
Very briefly, I want to acknowledge our staff, all of them, because both 10 and full-time summer staff have been, I can't recall a summer where there's been as much ongoing training and meetings and support in trying to gear up for a new school year. So, I think it hasn't felt like last year ended from the perspective of concluding and also trying to move forward. But I want to thank all of our staff for their hard work in preparations for the next school year. And outside of that, I have nothing else to share this evening.
Move on to 6.01, any board committee reports? Showing none. It's time for 6.02, the athletics update. Mr. Wolf and Mr. Loman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Again, good evening to all of you, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, we, Mr. Loman way back there, wish to address the board on a request for an update on athletics. Specific components of this presentation this evening will provide the board with an overview of our revised Spotsylvania County Public Schools Athletic Personnel Handbook, as well as a very preliminary overview of the addition of two sports to the middle school athletic program, as well as the potential costs associated with such. Additionally, we wish to address the request to potentially invite surrounding middle schools outside of our division to compete within the Spotsylvania County Public Middle School Athletic Program. So, this presentation is actually broken into two parts, where we're going to go over the Spotsylvania County Public Schools Athletic Personnel Handbook that Mr. Loman will go ahead and review. And then upon that completion, I'll go ahead and discuss the middle school athletic program, the sports consideration under review at this point, and the participation of surrounding school divisions. So, Mr. Loman.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to go through just an athletics update with you from the high school and middle school level, and then I will turn it back over to Mr. Wolf for the middle school information. For the last four to five months, we have been updating the, what formerly was known as the Coaching Standards Handbook, and that is now considered the Spotsylvania County Public Schools Athletic Personnel Handbook. This was reviewed and updated by our current Athletic Task Force, which includes members from the high school level and also middle school level, and also from our central office. The areas of focus within our handbook include the Virginia High School League eligibility rules. It also includes the roles and responsibilities of the activities directors at the high school level and also middle school level. It also includes roles and responsibilities for our athletic trainers at the high school level, and also all of our coaches at high school and middle school level as well. It also touches on supervision, communication, and duties of a coach at both the high school and middle school levels. We do touch on the hot topic as far as play, which is concussion awareness as well. We also deal with things that come about on a regular basis, such as heat and lightning guidelines, and then also training guidelines. First, I'll start by talking a little bit about the training portion and what's required of our coaches. First, the page you see here are requirements of the Virginia High School League. Every coach has three years from their hire date in order to get number one and number two completed. Number three is a yearly component, which everyone has to do, middle school and high school. And then number four, which I will go through individually with you here, is a recommendation that we would like all high school and middle school coaches to get. Number one is the American Sport Education Program, and this is the basic principles of coaching. Again, this is required of any first-time coach who is hired at the high school level. In 2009, this was brought into effect by the Virginia High School League, and they did grandfather-in any coach that was currently coaching at that time. But anyone from that point forward that was hired had to complete this certification. Middle school coaches, this is a recommendation at the middle school level, not a requirement. Number two is the Virginia High School League component. This goes into the nuts and bolts of Virginia High School League procedures and rules. So, this is required of all high school coaches, no matter when they were hired. They all have to complete that within the three years of being hired. Number three is the Virginia High School League Concussion Education, which again is a yearly requirement. Every coach must do that on a yearly basis, no matter whether they're a high school level and/or middle school level coach. And again, finally, the CPR, first aid, and AED certifications, we are recommending for all high school and middle school coaches at this time. In addition to the certifications and training I just discussed with you, our Human Resources and Central Office staff have added a division-level training aspect for all of our coaches, middle school and high school. And this is on top of all the normal procedures that our Human Resources Department requires of all of our coaches, applications, background checks, et cetera. Our division-level training is offered four times annually, once in the summer, and then once prior to each of the sport seasons that are starting throughout the school year. It's a two-part program, first part being a division presentation, which will be followed immediately on the same evening by a breakout session where they go, each individual coach would go back with their school athletic directors and/or activities directors and their administration to follow up on the division-level training, which they would have just received. All coaches, and this includes head coaches, assistant coaches, and also volunteer coaches, must complete this training. And again, this is required. They have them to their second season of coaching to complete this training. Our first training was held on July 20th at Cortland High School, and we had over 200 school personnel, including coaches, administrators, and activities directors, in attendance that evening. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Wolf for the middle school athletic update.
This evening, for the middle school athletic program, we start off with a philosophy of the middle school athletic program. So, Spotsylvania County Public Middle Schools believe that athletics at the middle school level is an integral part of the total educational program. We believe that interscholastic athletics, when properly planned and implemented, are related to the goals of general education and relate to the student, the student body, and the community. Middle school athletic opportunities, as they currently exist right now, for the females, we have basketball and soccer in the fall, volleyball in the winter, track and field, and softball in the spring. For the boys, we have football in the fall, wrestling and basketball in the winter, and soccer, and track and field in the spring. Under consideration tonight, I think it's important to go ahead and discuss Title IX at the same time, is that when considering the addition of a sport to an athletic program and in order to comply with the requirements of Title IX, you must consider adding another sport for the opposite gender. In our review of the middle school program and upon request of the school board, we're presenting the following sports for consideration. Now, this isn't the only sports that we've heard about, but these are the two sports to go ahead and focus on tonight. So, girls' field hockey and boys' baseball. So, what we see here for girls' field hockey is that the field space is competitive. Not all of our schools have the capability at this point because of competitive sports that are going along at the same time. All of our middle schools, in soliciting information from them, the same field that they have for soccer is the same field they have for football, except with the exception of Post Oak that uses Spotsylvania High School for their football games, and you have Chancellor Middle School that uses Chancellor Middle School for their games. So, what you see here is just a breakdown of what the potential cost would be for startup. This is assuming that the schools have absolutely nothing, and when it comes down to field hockey, they, for middle school, they would have absolutely nothing at this point. So, that's a ballpark figure based off of my sort of analysis of all of the field hockey components and not having a child who has played field hockey, but I believe that I could referee the sport at this point. So, what we find also for the official cost, this is broken down at about $45 a game. So, and, but there's a 5% booking fee that is not included in the figure that you see there of $4,200. Now, this is for across all middle schools, so I don't want you to think this is just for one. So, and a $30 travel fee for your referees to go ahead and come to the game. What I've calculated, the recurring cost that is not part of this document, is that approximately $21,000 or about $3,000 per middle school per year as a reoccurring cost. Most of that would be personnel for your coaching, okay? Boys' baseball, our field space is lacking. We have softball fields, but we don't have baseball fields at all of our complexes. Spotsylvania Middle School does have a baseball field, however, the outfield overlaps with football and soccer. Battlefield Middle School uses, their field is for softball in the spring. Chancellor Middle School has softball only. They could use the high school with some sort of collaboration with them and coordination. Freedom Middle School does have a baseball field. Ny River Middle School softball. Post Oak has a softball field, but again, with coordination with the high school, might be able to do something. And Thorntonburg Middle School softball only. The officials that you see in this game, with this figure, is a $70 cost per game. It's a $200 booking fee for the referees and a $9 travel fee. The recurring cost that you don't see associated with this is around $22,500 or roughly around $32.10 or $32.18 is what I have per middle school. And this does not include, neither one of those figures that I talk about for recurring cost does not include replacing equipment. When considering the participation of the surrounding school divisions, one area that I really felt that we needed to address, this allows our student athletes, just like we got to see tonight with our Career and Tech students, this allows our students to shine outside of our division. So, anytime we as a division get to demonstrate how good not only our athletes are, but our students in general, serves as a perfect reminder of the hard work we as a community put into the effort to support our kids. The challenges that exist with inviting other schools to participate or other divisions to participate is simply when it comes down to budgeting. Transportation costs that are associated with that, you pay for the cost of the bus plus the driver. You saw, just for the refereeing fees, that's just for two sports that we have at this point, but who would be responsible for that? You have the booking fee, the per-game fee, and the travel fee. The scheduling of games, currently, they play, middle schools play an eight-game format, and then they do tournaments that are associated with afterwards. So, taking a look at what the regular season could be versus a tournament. And then how many divisions to include. You could start off small, but potentially you could add additional divisions in, depending upon the schedule and the seasons, because most often the seasons bump right up against the next one to go ahead and get things taken care of. So, our next steps is just ongoing discussion and dialogue. Dialogue with leadership of neighboring divisions about our collective opportunities and challenges. I believe that there are opportunities. So, and some of those were mentioned, but as well as the challenges. So, and review and present the costs to the board during the FY '18 budget process. I believe that as part of what we do, yes, there's the potential that we could get grants that are associated with incorporating these types of sports. One grant that comes to mind, I know that we've talked about before, at least here, is the J.J. Watt Foundation does some startup costs for specific equipment, so is an opportunity for us to go ahead and explore. So, and at this point, any questions?
Mrs. Blaylock?
Thank you. Thank you both. I have a few questions. As you know, I'm the one that brought, I think, to you the baseball and field hockey recently, so I really, really appreciate some feedback and some numbers on that. I will say that's something the community has looked for for quite a long time. I think I remember being asked about baseball and field hockey back in 2007 for the first time. So, this isn't anything new, and it's good to see it at the point of we're having discussions. So, I have a few questions. The first one, is this something we're potentially looking at for, no, it's not this year, but next year? Is that the timeframe if this were to?
Yeah, I believe bringing it up through the budget process, I believe is sort of the best avenue. And I believe that working through that and maybe grants that we could secure, so it does require some effort this way, but I believe through the budget process is probably a better avenue to decide if it is feasible for that year or in subsequent years. So...
Okay. And you said baseball, replacing equipment. Have we ever had baseball at the middle school level? Did I miss that?
Not that I'm aware of.
We don't have equipment at all for baseball either, right?
No, this, the figures that I showed to you was startup, assuming we have nothing. So, worst-case scenario, if you will.
Right. And then you kept talking about potentially looking at other divisions. The middle school doesn't play other divisions now. Is that something that you're looking at for all sports, or were you specifically identifying these two sports?
No, that would be all sports across the board. So, and it was, even when I was a middle school principal, I had heard that, you know, there was interest from outside divisions to go ahead and participate with us. So, and I believe it's just that further look and talking with, whether that be Fredericksburg, whether that be King George or Caroline, so to see what that looks like from even their budget perspective and whether or not they're able to support the transportation too. Do we travel to them, or do they travel to us, and who secures the cost for the referees and so on and so forth? So, it does require some further dialogue, which is my intent down at the bottom, but again, this is very much a preliminary discussion. Yes, we've had the discussion, but now we have figures to what that looks like. So, but that would be the idea.
Yeah, I really was glad to see those figures and the rest of the presentation as well. And I would say, Mr. Loman, you do a fabulous job. Thank you for that, and you as well, Mr. Wolf, this evening. The only thing I would say about going outside the division is, you know I support the baseball and the field hockey, but before we go outside the division and budget talks, I'll be talking activity best is first.
Sure.
That's the only thing I'd say. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
How do you go about measuring the interest in these activities anyway? How do you determine?
Well, I come to the school board meeting, Mr. Blaine, and that's where I hear from the board, so, no. I can say that just anecdotally, I'm hearing about the interest based off of what has been expressed by the board. So, that's why I chose these two, I don't mean to be flippant, but that's really how I went with these two areas.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is really relative to coaches, and if I could, Mr. Loman, you mentioned all the training that we provide and how we're carefully working with the coaches as they go through the school year and so on. How do you elect, how do you select coaches? What is the, somebody comes in and says, "I want to be a coach." What standards do you use for that?
Same exact process that you, that any principal would use to hire a teacher. We advertise for any vacancy that we might have, and then we go through an interview process that typically involves the athletic director or the activities director of the school, and also a school administrator, and then we select who we think is the best candidate for that position.
Are all coaches certified teachers?
No. No, we have a good number of community members who are coaches within our schools.
And so, our training applies to that entire group?
If they are going to coach in Spotsylvania County, they are going to follow all of our training and certifications.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
A question, are the athletic personnel handbooks posted online?
Not at this point. They will be, sir.
Okay, I was thinking for the sake of communication. The other would be on the field hockey field space. As we move forward in the CIP, we have artificial turf. Will that not facilitate field space?
I don't want to say that it could not or that it could. I think there's always potential opportunities that could assist in trying to find field space. But this recommendation that I have or the information that I provided tonight is just, it becomes competitive with football using the field at some of our middle schools.
field space, but this recommendation that I have or the information that I provided tonight is just, it becomes competitive with football using the field at some of our middle schools and soccer running two seasons. So, the only sort of thought that I had is, is I looked out at one of our schools the other day is looking at our practice fields and converting one of our practice fields at that point, so, which would have an additional cost that I have not configured into this, but I do believe that that deserves a discussion.
Also, there are, Spotsy Middle uses more of the American Legion field, but there are also fields that are directly behind Spotsy Middle, although I can't.
From Marshall Park? Or are you talking on?
No, I'm talking about the fields on Spotsy Middle grounds, you know, so you don't have to cross the highway.
Right.
Have any of those fields been considered for?
Spotsy Middle has the, has the ability to go ahead and, and do for baseball. For field hockey, they still have.
Because I thought I understood you to say differently, and I was, I was thinking of those four or so fields that are behind Spotsy Middle.
No, what, what has been reported to me is that their baseball field that they have access to, actually the outfield of that baseball field is on the football field.
Correct.
So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. The CPR and AED certification, I know that teachers now have to do that for their recertification. Would that count, or is it a different form? And then, of course, the people who are not division teachers, then they would have to do it themselves, but is what, what we offer for our recertification, would that qualify?
For the, yes, that would qualify for any teacher-coaches that have gone through that certification process, that would qualify them. Sure.
Mr. Twig.
Yes, and regarding funding, short and long term, is all this going to be school-generated? We going to try to squeeze budget money? Same for high schools?
Well, for the, the middle school program, that's why it has to go through the budget process. I would love to say that at the middle school program that it would be self-funded. It does become, you know, the, the turnout for a middle school game is not as much as what it is for a high school game, so being able to funnel that money back into the program. So, you do have to look at if, how you're going to support that program long-term. So, it's a very valid question, which is why by throwing out these figures tonight and letting it play through the budget process, it allows us to continue to look at these numbers and then for you as a board to decide the next steps.
Okay, and similarly for high school?
High school has a more robust program, if, if you will, if you want to put it that way, but some of those monies go back right into their athletic program. So, I would love to say, again, back at the middle school level, that you could, that it would be self-funded. We do have two schools with a self-funded sport because the division has not picked that up, and it is lacrosse at both Massaponic, Massaponics and over at Riverbend. Those are self-funded sports at this point and remain so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I just have one question.
Sure.
For the, and it might just be a comment, too. Professionally, I maintain two certifications that require the CPR license and, and certification, and first aid, just was requested there. Who's going to be in charge of them, making sure that it recertifies? Because neither one of the associations I belong to ever have checked back, and I've been members for twelve, fourteen years, and they expire every couple of years, so I was just curious who was in charge of that.
Sure. That, that would fall onto the building-level activities director and/or athletic director, and also the coaches' responsibility as well, especially where it is not currently required. It's just a recommendation. If we get to the point where we're going to require it, then that is part of my job or the building-level activities director to track that, just like I have to track all the other certifications.
Perfect, thanks.
Sure. And if I may, the, the, the next presentation that we have for the, the athletic personnel handbook to our coaches, and again, about two hundred of our coaches showed up at this first meeting, was a very good turnout for the first one. Mr. Twig was able to go ahead and represent the school board at that point. I do encourage you to go ahead and come on out with the division presentation at the very beginning and then attend one of the breakout sessions, so you can see what everybody is talking about. And, but the next session will be, I believe it's October twenty-second, but I'll verify that date and make sure that I get that to you. But we do it in the evening, so we can make sure that our coaches are able to attend and be there, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item seven, consent agenda. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening of the approval of the minutes of the July eleventh, two thousand sixteen regular meeting, donations which are usual and customary, and approval of bus service on private roads to Old Greenwich and the YMCA, staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I will make that motion.
I would second it.
Don Shelley and Dr. Meyer have motioned and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? We'll call a question. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Onto action items, eight-point-zero run. The first reading approval of revisions to school board policies EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan, and EBCB, Emergency Response Procedures and Regulation, EBCB-R, Emergency Response Procedures. Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. That sounds a lot more complicated than it really is. In accordance with state law, the statewide fire prevention code and clarification from the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety, school board policies EB and EBCB and regulation EBCBR have been updated to reflect the changes in law, and I believe you all have the, have the documents in front of you. In, in summary, the number of fire drills have been reduced by, by two. The number of lockdown drills have been doubled from two to four, so in essence, that's, that's what the changes reflect, and I stand prepared to answer any questions you may have for me.
Do we have a motion?
I will so move to adopt.
Mr. Blaine moves, and Ms. Blalock seconds to approve the proposed changes to our emergency response plan as state law guides. Is there any discussion?
I just have a comment, if I may. Mr. Lynn, I listened to your presentation about this preparedness at our, I guess, the LLE, and I was very impressed and astounded at how much work had to go into it and how much preparation you've done so that we can handle emergencies, and I just want to compliment you and your staff that worked on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blaine. I have a, I have a very strong school safety team as well as schools that, that take this, this aspect of safety very seriously.
Dr. Meyer.
Just a point of clarification, I think you had said approval, it's approval first reading.
Correct.
First reading approval.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Move on to eight-point-zero-two, fire extinguishers and fire suppression system inspections. Ms. Finley and Mr. Hockaday.
Good evening, Ms. Grant, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I have two items for you. The first one is our fire extinguishers and fire suppression system inspections. This was put out as an invitation for bid, and we issued the invitation for bid through Eva, and we also advertised it on our division website. The following bids were received. Simplex Grinnell was thirteen thousand six hundred seventy-four ninety-five. Fire Solutions was thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars fifteen cents. Global Fire Protection was fourteen thousand three hundred fifty forty-five cents, and Fire X Corp. was thirty-two thousand thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. We recommend that you go with a low bid from Simplex Grinnell. The contract will be a one-year from date of award with four possible renewal options on that.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Shelley and Dr. Meyer, motion and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Shelley.
How often are fire, do fire extinguishers need to be examined or checked out or whatever it is that they do?
Each, it's a year, it's on a yearly basis, but this is for fire suppression solely, which is under a different contract than fire extinguishers, but the answer, the short answer is yearly for both of them, but they're at different times.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any more questions or discussion? Let's call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Move on to eight-point-zero-three, triple-shredded hardwood mulch. Ms. Finley and Mr. Hockaday.
Thank you again. Again, we issued an invitation for bid for hardwood mulch. We use about two thousand cubic yards of mulch a year. We issued the invitation for bid through our website and also through the statewide Eva website. The following bids were received. We had two. We had Quail Ridge, which is a local company, which was fifteen dollars per cubic yard, and it was in bulk. It was where we would go pick it up by the truckload. And then we had Site One Landscape Products, and they were offering to do bags, so it's about nine bags per cubic yard. So, that's why the price comes out to be a little bit more expensive than you would just for the bulk. We would still have to pick it up from a local site, but it would be in bagged form, not bulk. We recommend that you go with the low price of the fifteen dollars per cubic yard. That will really help us save the cost for the mulch, and we do use quite a bit of it for all of the school division throughout the year. And again, it'll be a five-year possible contract, one year from renewal with four options on it.
Motion?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer motions, and second by Ms. Shelley to approve the mulch provider. Any questions? Ms. Shelley.
And I have been by some of the schools who have just recently, I guess, mulched to get the year started, and they are looking wonderful, so you guys, great job. Thank you.
I actually have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just from my knowledge, do we have to replace the mulch every year?
The areas that we have to replace every year are, are the playground areas because we have to keep a certain depth by code, so during the year it gets compacted, so we have to go back in, fluff it up. A lot of it gets spread out of it or tracked out of the playground, so yearly we are adding back, or sometimes if it gets overrun, certain areas get overrun with weeds, we go in and clean it all out and replace all of it.
That's, that's what I thought, and the special word you said there was to code, which a lot of people don't realize, we actually have a mulch code to follow. Are there any more questions or discussion? Let me call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to information items. Is there anything that needs to be mentioned or acknowledged by anyone? And move on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? And on to ten-point-zero-two, do we have any new business to discuss? Okay, on to closed meeting. Motion to go into closed meeting?
Motion.
All righty, I read this one. Right. Be it resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: Take consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as of, as permitted by two dot two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia. And consideration of student disciplinary appeals as permitted by section two dot two dash three seven one one A two of the Code of Virginia. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session. Dr. Meyer motion, Ms. Shelley seconded to return to open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrying. We are now back in open session. Now, I read this thing. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two-point-two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Is there a motion?
No, I second.
Dr. Meyer motion, Mr. Blaine seconded. Any discussion? Call the vote. Oh, sorry, roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blalock, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye. Motion carries six-zero.
Voted twice.
Now, items from the closed meeting. Dr. Martin.
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendations of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, resignations, retirement, and a request for extended leave of absence for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school years presented in closed meeting and permitted by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia.
Ms. Shelley motioned, and Dr. Meyer seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Someone want to? Yes, Ms. Shelley motions to adjourn. Who second? Dr. Meyer seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. All righty. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session.